Agenda, we have approval of the amendments from the July 23, 2012 meeting. Approval of minutes of the August 6, 2012 special meeting. A liquor license approval for Casey's General Store, number 1549. The pep stop. Employment resolution for Park and Recreation for fitness instructors. Tony Braxma, Rachel Popejoy, Amanda Carr, all at $10 an hour. Approval of claims in the amount of $866,175.78. Is there any questions? I just have a correction, Joy.
Okay.
I had a no vote on the city-owned building.
Oh, I did forget that, didn't I? Okay.
Okay, if there's no other comments or questions.
Move to approve as amended?
Second.
So it's been moved by Hallie, second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Silvers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
I forgot to ask, were there any changes in the agenda tonight? Anybody have any changes? Not, we'll go forward.
No.
Okay. Public appearances, is anybody here from the chamber? That's not.
No.
It's the Chamber Garage Sale. They're looking for approval for the, where they usually have it, at the parking lot, at the corner of Court Street and Washington for Saturday, September 15.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, moved by Hamilton, second by Rasmussen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. We have several resolutions tonight. The first one is the acceptance of the Northwest Quadrant of Fairfield Loop Trail. And Kent Rice is here tonight to give us a little comment.
Thank you, Connie. Kent Rice, French Reniker Associates. That project is the, I call it the paved trail in the Northwest Quadrant that goes from the trailer court out by Brookville Road and comes into Athan Gier at the county shed. I feel like the project is ready to be accepted. Kevin and I were going to walk that together, but we were unable to do that because he left rather quickly on us, for a good reason. So, I talked to him by phone, and what we would like you to do would be to accept the project contingent upon him and I reviewing it together, and then we would do that when he returns next Monday.
I would so move.
Second. Moved by Revolinsky, second by Silvers. Any further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Silvers?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thanks, Kent. Next resolution is for the tax abatement for 50 South Ninth Street, Renee Frisbury. And it looks like they're gonna rework the old Tirebusters and More building. Property owners will be installing a HVAC system, re-sheet rocking, insulating the building, new doors, windows, new floor, closing up overhead doors and reskining the outside with metal.
That actually confuses me, because they're talking about work they're going to be doing. I mean, the abatement comes when it's done, doesn't it?
I posed that question to John today, and if you want to comment on that, John?
You don't want to apply for it after you're done, but there's a window, the assessor gives until February of the following year. You tell them here you're completed. You can apply for it anytime you're getting started.
So is it contingent on them actually doing the work that they say they'll do in the application?
Well, there won't be a valuation that you apply the abatement to until the following January at least. So, they'll find out if it wasn't. Yeah. Contingent on that one.
I have a question for whoever remembers this or knows it. Because we were having, someone was having a discussion with me about, well, what is our policy for tax abatement? I know we had it originally, there was something for residential as well, and we took that off. But, so we kept it on for commercial and industrial, but did it have to do with also renovations, or did it only have to do with new construction? Can someone check our policies? You're nodding your head, you think this is an issue.
I think the big argument before was with the goodwill. And they took, that was really a big question, and they took a clear down to just the bare walls.
Right.
And so they went ahead and granted that abatement. And that's pretty much what they're doing here, too.
So there doesn't have to be a change in the footprint?
Well, originally, according to our policy, it did, but we granted a waiver for goodwill, which basically stripped the building and rebuilt from that. So what are they putting in here? Do we have any idea?
I understand it's curves, curves for women.
I see.
I don't see a value on here either. Did I miss that? Or is it value of the remodeling?
That value's on there.
But not the value of the renovation? No, because the renovation isn't done yet.
Yeah.
But shouldn't they have like an estimate?
I guess just whatever their new valuation is, they want it debated, you know, for three years, whatever the new valuation turns out to be. So, they're hoping probably that it'll be low. So they're not gonna get an estimate.
The form doesn't actually have a slot for that, for what they're valuing. Actually, below the county assessor, it looks like they review it at the end, so we just have to give our approval.
But isn't that what?
There's a permit value, though, isn't that what that is?
Yeah, I was gonna say, isn't that, the zoning permit number has to be on there, and then the permit value is what the assessor would base. You know, they have to give an estimate of what they're doing at some point in time.
So should we table this until they give that, fill the form out properly?
Well, is our, the idea of the tax abatement contingent upon the amount? I guess that's the question. To me, it's not really a matter of how much they're gonna fix it up, it's whether or not we're gonna allow our policy to cover them. Because originally, again, our policy was that it would be for new construction, or putting on a new footprint. But since this is a, you know, basic overhaul of a garage into a workout place, you know, we could decide that, yeah, well, whatever.
I did hear Rebecca say that it is up to the assessor, that she can actually deny this if it doesn't exceed.
The current value.
Yeah. So I think, I kind of understood that, yeah, I mean, you wait until after she, or whoever goes and makes the assessment.
So we should just, you're agreeing with Michael, we should table this?
Well, not necessarily, because I think, I don't think there's any more they can do. I think, I think the assessor is the one that makes the final determination. I think we just, we just approve the application, but then the assessor can either reject it or approve it.
But the application isn't completely filled out, because it's missing the zoning number and.
Yeah, and I don't know if they know that number.
I know they've already started work down there, the doors are tore out, they've been working on the building.
Yeah.
Well, is two weeks gonna send them back? If we ask them to give us more info next meeting?
I wouldn't think so.
I don't think so.
Since they've already started.
I think it might be wise, just so that everyone's clear.
Yeah.
Let's just, if we could have a motion to table for two weeks.
I'd like the property owner to come in, because when we made that decision on goodwill, the property owner came in and really explained what he did. He said they tore it down to the basic structure, and it was essentially a rebuild. So I'd like to have that person come, we can ask him or her questions.
Fine.
Do, I'm sorry, do you want to, they come to come and to talk to a particular committee?
No, to adjust the council with their applications, we can ask questions.
Okay, sounds good.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Hallie, and second by Revolinsky to table this issue till the next council meeting. Is any further discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Silvers?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Next resolution is financial support for Area 15 Regional Planning Commission. I think we've been doing this every year. That's for Area 15 to help us with projects, and it's 41 cents per capita for a total amount equal to $3,884.24 to cover financial operating costs of Area 15 Regional Planning Commission from July 1, 2012 through June 2013. Again, I think we've, we've been doing this for many years, so, anybody have any questions regarding that?
This is where we run our grants and things through as well, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Silvers, second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Silvers?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Next resolution, fixing the date for a meeting on the proposition to authorize a loan and disbursement agreement in the issuance of not to exceed $600,000 sewer revenue capital loan notes. And Melanie's here to talk about that just a little bit.
Thank you. I'm mainly here to answer any questions, but I'm sure there's questions as to why you are taking out loans for a project that's already under construction. This additional loan is for the sludge storage tank and the emergency power project at the wastewater treatment plant. And the nicest way to put this is somewhere between when the original application was made and the final loan was signed, $600,000 fell off of your application. Whether it was a clerical error, or that the previous city administrator thought that he could save that much money, that's why you are now short $600,000 to being able to pay the final bills on this project. I will say that there have been change orders on this project, but totaling around $150,000, it's not where the $600,000 comes in. So I'll take any questions if you have on that. I don't know what kind of reports or anything Kevin has filled you in on.
Basically, it's the $500,000 approximately that was the I-Jobs grant.
That, that could have been where it came off of.
We got that.
You found that?
We got that.
Finally?
No, we got that. We had that along.
Well, and I, from my understa-
There was some confusion as to where that went. That was why I was mentioning that.
From my understanding, too, I also called Jeff Clossin, and I think he had, I don't have in front of me, four or $500,000 that he thought was in the, that was in the current budget, that.
I think he was gonna use reserves.
That, yeah, he was gonna use reserves, thank you. I was trying to scratch from memory what we talked about. And, but I think some of that was used in this previous year because of additional expenses.
For other things in the department, yeah.
So he was gonna use reserves from the sewer fund, but we spent them on other stuff. Do you remember what we spent them on, Darren?
I can't list them off the top of my head, no, but I know that we've done quite a bit of maintenance.
Like, in other words, on some things that we didn't anticipate before, and that we had to use our reserves for?
Yes, we have used reserved money to accomplish projects that we had not foreseen happening. To identify those off the top of my head, I cannot do that right at this time. But I know that the reserve was not as substantial as what it was first thought it was going to be, and these other projects that we had labeled money for to use out of that reserve did have overruns on them as well.
Can I ask a question? If we waited for two weeks when Kevin was back, maybe we could have a little fuller picture on this, would that be a problem?
I don't, I guess, because right now, I think you are using your reserve to pay the bills that you have, and that this would be essentially refunding your reserve, if that's correct, Joy. So, waiting two weeks, I guess that's Joy's call, but really, tonight, you're just setting the public hearing date, so you can still turn this down in two weeks.
It's just a public hearing, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think it's just like any other, I mean, you build a house, you always go over what you think you're gonna spend. I mean, I don't think it's anything, it's really too bad, because, what did we borrow? Three point?
$3.5 million.
$3.5 was what, yeah, and it was, and we only got three. It should, we were short. It was really $3.6, I think, and then, for some reason, I don't know, I think Jeff thought he could save that $600,000, and, yeah, it just, yeah, everything is just so expensive. And so the SRF has agreed to go ahead and let us have the 600, because it was all justified. I mean, you have to-
Because it's supposed to be part of the state rebuilding fund, man.
And you have to put down what you're spending it for, and, yeah. I mean, it's all justified, we have all the bills and-
Right, and you have to have proof of revenues in order to return the money back to the government.
And I know the last drawdown, I had a lot more that we had paid out than what was left of the loan. So, yeah, it's, it's very justified.
Well, I'll move to fix the date.
Okay. Okay, moved by Revolinsky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Hammers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, then, and the next meeting, I think that Kevin will be here, and he can give us a little more detail and fill in the blanks more, I think that will be helpful. Okay. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, it's August 27th, so sorry. Right, I even wrote that down, can't read my own writing here. So that, that date will be August 27th, not, okay. Now, the next one is approving post-issuance compliance policy, and I think we all had a question on that, but Joy's gonna give us her best effort, what this is.
Well, here's what it is, that's why you don't have anything on your iPad. And I can just read you what the attorney wrote to me. "For some time now, the IRS has been urging issuers of tax-exempt obligations to adopt written procedures to help ensure their post-issuance compliance with the requirements of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended." So that, that's what it really is, there has to be a, I mean, John probably knows about it. "Questions now included on the information returns which must be filled in connection with tax-exempt borrowings and the recent guidance from the service make it very clear that detailed post-issuance compliance procedures should be an integral component of any issuer's bond program." So we let the attorneys handle it, that's after the bonds are issued, they just wanna, I assume, they probably just want to check and make sure we spent the money where we said we were gonna spend it, and, yeah, it's just to cover us, I think.
Says here, "Post-issuance compliance policy attached here, too, as Exhibit A, is adopted and approved." It would be nice to see that before we adopt and approve it. Do you have a hard copy of it?
Yeah, this is it. Yeah, it's pretty thick, that's why Rebecca didn't, yeah. And it is, it's just, the attorneys are just saying, yeah, we need to.
Do we have a deadline on this?
I don't know.
I think it's 18 months out from what your financing is. I'm not sure which financing it's tied to.
It's probably the six-
IRS, that's usually where it comes.
Yeah, it's probably the $600,000, because it came in the same packet with the $600,000. I mean, it's a whole deal.
Okay. I would have to agree with John, I would like to, I'm a reader, I need to read through it.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah.
If we're, if we're setting policy, I would agree.
Okay. Is that a?
Table motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Silvers, and second by Revolinsky to table this until the next meeting.
And then if we can get somebody to make-
I'll make you a copy. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'm in.
Okay, please call the roll.
Did you make the move?
I did.
Okay, Silvers and Revolinsky.
Silvers?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, there's no mayor's report tonight, and a city attorney report is next, and John is here, so I'll hand it over to him.
I think Jeff Clossin may have touched on this briefly, and I know about a month and a half ago, we passed out a draft, it was done by Tom Simmering for us. Unfortunately, Tom passed away of a heart attack in the last two weeks, so we aren't gonna have the benefit of his good work. He was a good friend to our town and did this for us about six or seven other times on our TIPS and on our Civic Center Economic Development Agreement. So, I kinda lose a little of my voice when I talk about him, because he's been down here several times, and he would have probably come down and gone through this with you. That is going to be handed out to you in revised form by the Ayler's firm at our next meeting, but I want to hand you out what is planned to take place, and what this is In the early 90s, we adopted a tax abatement plan for commercial and industrial property and residential property. In 1999, you changed your plan so that you didn't include residential anymore. And my understanding is, and I think I was around when it occurred, that the sentiment upon some people about the residential abatement was, it didn't make that difference when they were building their property, whether the city gave them this credit on, back then it was on the first $40,000 of value of the improvements on their property. One of the things we need to let the city finance attorney up at Ayler's know about this, though, is what your preference is, whether you want to strictly leave it commercial and industrial, or whether you have any interest in going back and adding a residential abatement plan to this. They can get that in and redraft the original urbanization, urban revitalization plan draft if you like the idea of residential abatement by August 27. If you look at your timeline here, this is statutory as far as things we have to do, and we want to do this in the year 2012. Particularly want to do that because we, actually, our old plan ran up through 2009 as far as the way it's worded in the ordinance. The ordinance has provisions in it that carry on, so you've been granting abatements without updating your plan. Actually, since we've had these plans all the way going back to 1990, you've had two or three times in the past, about every five years, when you've done an update. We're just at that point where you should do the update on the plan, catch the new parts of the Iowa legislation, and also, we probably want to remodel our ordinance a little bit and bring it up so that it's effective, probably January 2013 with application, not later than February 2013, the way it works on our current year and our past years. But if you look at your timeline here, we bring in the plan on the 27th, you've had a chance to look at it in advance, we'd like to adopt a resolution of necessity to do at least the industrial and commercial again. Then we have to go through a process where we notify all the occupants of residences, commercial and industrial properties within our city limits and within the affected areas. Now, the question is the affected areas. Opinion of Tom Simmering and opinion of Pat Martin that's working with us from the Ayler's firm is that sometimes these things, when they overlap as far as your TIF districts that already exist, can complicate things. The recommendation is that you have your TIF area only be allowed abatement if it's by a special action of the city council. If you think it complicates things, or it's gonna interfere with an existing TIF issue and the documents and resolutions you adopted when you did that, you'll probably be told by me and by Ayler's that, want to take a second look at that, or you want to be careful about that. And you may decide, you still can allow it, but you may decide that, well, that's not particularly where we want to do this, and that our purpose in encouraging construction, new starts and so forth, is not going to make any difference in that already existing TIF area. As far as TIF areas, you have six or seven of them in town, you're probably all familiar with them, if you've been around here a while, but if you're newer. There's one on West Jackson that is some multifamily duplexes. There is the wagon wheel senior housing. That particular, half of the block is a TIF district from one project. South Gate is a TIF project. Carrington Point is a TIF project. The industrial park has a TIF project for water, sewer, and streets infrastructure. Dexter had a TIF project that was associated with a water tower over there, and you have a TIF project down at Park Place that was one of the most successful of its kind for residential back in the early 90s. So those basically are all on our books, they've all been successful, they've all paid their way, but they also define areas on our city map inside our city limits that probably create a question mark on our assessor's cards, our auditor's cards, and our treasurer's cards about, do we already have to do a calculation for something else? Most of the TIFs are paid down or paid off, but we still, I believe, have some coming from Carrington Point, and I believe maybe West Monroe, and I would say most of the others are paid down, so you will probably bump into that, but that's what we have to consider. So the map that you will get with the Urban renewal plan in its final form, we'll have little highlights where those are located, and some language that basically says that in those areas, they may still be allowed, but it'll be by special council action, so you get a chance to stop and pause and take a look at it. Other than that, these notices that go out are gonna put probably the water department here, and possibly Joy, and possibly one person over in the county auditor's office, through a little bit of a headache, I promise it'll only be a day or two, but. Shannon in the auditor's office has generated a disc that has all the property owners within the city limits of Fairfield. Some of those property owners aren't occupants. So the way we're gonna get to the occupants first, for assured notice, which has to be at least 30 days' notice, will be by using our water department's mailing list, and then by process of elimination, anybody that we have as an occupant who isn't an owner will get a notice off of the disc that is generated by the auditor. We have to do that at least 30 days ahead of a public hearing. Our public hearing, according to this timeline, if we get the notices out, publish it in the newspaper, everybody's got their due process opportunity to consider whether they want to say anything about this or not. We'll have a public hearing on October 8. October 8th still gives us a couple of possible wrinkles. Somebody could come in and say, "I want to have another hearing, I want to have more discussion about this," and so forth. Or one of your committees could do that if you wanted to, and so forth. If you have a second hearing, you need to have it within 30 days. It could be- It could be five days later. That's enough minimum notice, but it has to be within 30 days of what you just did. If there isn't any request for a second hearing, you'd go right to adopting a resolution that approves the plan and moving forward to adopting an ordinance that designates the area and references the plan through the readings in the ordinance. You should be able to get that done October 22nd, the 12th of November, and the 26th of November. So if it works out that there isn't any second hearing request, you'll have this done by Thanksgiving. You won't have to be considering it in the month of December. You'll get it done within the calendar year, but we're not going to find to fold this into what the assessors have been considering in evaluations to begin the next year, and we'll be off running into a newly adopted tax exemption procedure with whichever abatement you want to go for. So your choices, if you give me an indication tonight, or at least as soon as possible, are going to be commercial, industrial, and residential. So if you want to bounce this back around yourselves a little bit tonight, I sort of indicated to the city finance attorney, Pat Martin, that generally Kevin was familiar with residential abatement. They'd always had it out at Dennison, so he said he didn't have any problem with it. Let's just see how the council feels. I'm seeing how the council feels, okay?
Any comments? I just recall when I was on council previously, and we did a survey with all the homeowners that had abatements, and asking them if that abatement made a difference, had an impact on their decision. And as I recall, there was no impact. They were going to build or upgrade, whether there was an abatement or not, but we felt it was still useful for the commercial and industrial. So we discontinued that. So, you know, the Economic Development Committee could get together and discuss it if you want, or if there's some interest?
I have a comment. And I'm not sure about residential, because I do remember that, and it, you know, I know Kevin felt differently about it. He felt like they had a different experience in Dennison, so I'm willing to open that discussion again. But the comment I wanted to make tonight was more about the commercial, industrial. Maybe we should reword it in such a way that we didn't have to make a special exception for this kind of renovations that came up to us in the last two times here. So, in other words, currently was, again, a new footprint, right? New construction or changing the footprint of your property, whereas we might want to consider... maybe not. Maybe it's better that we consider it each time and just saying, "Well, you know, just because you're remodeling the kitchen of your..." or something, you know, that why should you get a tax abatement for that? And just a thought that occurred to me, you know, since it's come up the last two times, the tax abatements have come up, it had to do with this kind of renovation of a building. I don't know. Any other thoughts on that?
John, your comments well taken, and the goodwill. This is a very good example of a situation where footprint issues versus how much of that's really new construction and so forth. If your assessor's willing to accept it as new construction, usually the municipality's wanting to incentivize and encourage, so your assessor's usually where the buck stops. Our assessors accepted that notion about the goodwill makeover, which is all but a new building. And that's probably a pretty good example of precedent to look back to, because it's such a substantial redo that, except for framework, we can take it down to the framework. That's going to be as close to a complete alteration as you're going to ever see it, I think. So if we use that as an example, I think we've got a sort of a defining example.
Do you think we need to change the way the ordinance is stated? And if so, does that affect our timeline in any way?
If we have to write something out of this, and we don't get it done in the next two weeks, we'll be over into mid-September.
Yeah.
Or we can go again.
So...
And that'll bump us into December to get everything done.
And we would have, probably wouldn't have the three readings of the ordinance either.
Yeah, we'd have to probably proceed through a waiver of the rules.
On one hand, if we're saying, "Well, if the assessor considers it new construction," since we have in our ordinance that it's new construction, so we could just have a policy that the way we define new construction is how it is, but through the assessor's rules, and maybe that would be a good way to consider this one here as well.
Okay. Okay, is there any other comments? Do you want to meet about residential? You want to leave it out? I would say no comments mean leave it alone.
I don't think we've seen a lot of requests for it.
I think part of the problem, though, the last time around was, is a lot of people didn't know that it was an option available to them. And I know that there was some discussion about that, too, and that's why we sent out the questionnaire, or part of the reason why we sent out that questionnaire that you referred to, Connie. I know at the time, we built our new home here in Fairfield. It's been 14 years ago now. We had no idea that it was available to us, and we had come into City Hall and get a zoning permit and declared the value of the home and that for the permit and everything, and no one at any time said anything about, you know, possible tax abatement on the first So I would think that if we would do a better job of informing people that this is available, we may get more interest in doing something like this, but... and I think that's kind of what Kevin had gotten at about being over in Dennison, was that they made a point of letting people know that this was a tool that was available to them, and, you know, why not take advantage of it? Because not only does it benefit you as a homeowner renovating or expanding, it also benefits the city in the long run, because once the abatement's over with, then we have that new value on our tax rolls. So I guess, at least that's my point of view on it. It might be worth looking into what the legislature's done, too, on changing rules as far as taxing and being able to abate taxes, because they do make small changes when it comes to that throughout the year. And John even mentioned that, too, that, you know, we haven't really looked at what the Iowa code now says about abatements and how they can be applied.
What we'll try to do is, as soon as we have any other modifications put into the revitalization plan, we'll get it around to all of you on your iPods or iPads. And anyway, you'll have a chance to look at it and react to it before the next council meeting. But it'll also come out as a hard copy to adopt, and if there's changes, we can shuffle those back and forth. But there will also be a set of paperwork and procedures from the finance attorney as far as the resolution of necessity that states that why you want to do this and what your purposes are and so forth. There'll be some maps that are attachments. There will be the list, which Joy and Shannon and Barbo or Water will all be trying to have as an Exhibit B. The maps will be Exhibit A, and you'll get a chance to take a shot at the text. Hopefully, we can get this talked through and adopted on the 27th.
Okay.
Just kind of based on what Darren was saying, I was kind of having the same thought, especially since the fact that we have, I was going to call him Jeff, since we have Kevin here, and he's expressed, you know, kind of a lot of energy as far as residential abatement, that he thought it was good. Why don't we wait till he comes back, and then maybe Economic Development should meet with him, at least hear that point of view before we decide to pass on this again?
Okay.
And then we can recommend whatever to the council.
I was actually even thinking if maybe we can get him on the phone this week.
Either way, is he, how long has he gone?
Apparently, it's not going to be back until next week.
Oh.
So I think that might...
We really should get him on the phone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That might push us a little bit much.
Doesn't matter if it's phone or...
Okay. So Economic Development Committee will get together this week. We can pick out a meeting date after tonight's meeting, and...
You may also want to talk with Ways and Means, because basically what you're doing is making the gratuity of the year's taxes that you abate on the residential.
We're two of the same members.
Yeah. So, okay, maybe we can just do a joint meeting.
We could.
Okay, we'll do that, and we'll talk about that.
Other questions?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Committee and board reports. Susan has a public safety and transportation report.
Yes. We met on 7/25. We had a lengthy meeting, lots of different topics. Basically, want to kind of go over what those topics were and then have a discussion where we can ask John some questions about the lake. So first one is Chris Johnson approached us about posting signage in the alley behind the Coed Theater. His concern was there is a business that has an entrance from the back that if emergency personnel were dispatched, may be confusing and wouldn't be recognizable. So the committee spoke. Kevin was there. I referred them back to, or I contacted Darryl Biscard about it, because we thought we would take on additional responsibilities if we were to name that alley a street. So right now, Chris will be having conversations with Darryl about maybe putting up some separate signage rather than a street sign. It would just be a separate signage that they provide. So I will keep you posted on that, but right now, we're not looking to move forward with naming that alley as a street. One of the other topics was deer population within the city limits, and Connie has done some research on that and is in continued discussions with DNR about researching a special season within city limits. It would be a bow season to help with the deer population within the city. We, I know, we did talk about having possibly a town hall meeting to discuss how residents really feel about that. So we tabled it for further research, and we will revisit it at one of our upcoming meetings, maybe in September. Another topic was parking on Second Street. There is, has been a problem with parking on both sides of South Second Street between Harrison and Fillmore. Sometimes of the day, it's very quiet, and there's not anyone parked on the street. Other parts of the day, you couldn't get a fire truck down that, so that street. So I have taken some calls from some residents on that street, as has Scott Vaughn. The committee recommended that we move forward with limiting parking on that street to just one side. I have been in contact with Darryl Biscard. He is suggesting that we restrict the east side of the street for parking so that it is consistent with South Second Street from Harrison North. So I am making that recommendation as well as the committee tonight. So if we want to...
Would you repeat the location again?
It is South Second Street from Harrison South to Fillmore. And if we do that, then it would be consistent with Harrison North. So parking on one side.
So there is a motion from Susan.
Second.
And a second from Hamilton to have no parking on the east side of the street on South Second Street between Harrison and Fillmore. Any further discussion? Please call the roll. Silver's?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revelensky?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Okay, and the final topic of the evening was a discussion regarding the Lake Bonnefield and swimming area. We had both a representative, Captain Thomas from the police, we had Chief Vaughn from the fire, we had some concerned citizens, we had the friends of the beach that were also in attendance, and everyone, I think we did a good job of letting everyone speak and give their opinion. I know that Bob, I think Bob is here tonight. He has made some suggestions about adding a few things to the beach area to make it a little more safe, and he has done, has already put some of those things in place, I believe. I'm just going to refer to my notes here. We moved the crocodile head removed, right? So it's no longer there. We've also put in, or the committee has also put in, some new yellow floats that have been equally spaced across the lake. They pulled in the outermost rope so that the swimming depth is under five feet. So those were just a few things, and they are still researching additional safety devices as well that can be placed out in that area. So what I suggested that we do, and before moving on, I think Pam Craft was also there representing the park and rec, and she provided her input as well. I don't want to name everyone that was at the meeting, because there were several, and I'm sure I'd missed some. But what I thought we would do tonight is just invite John to come and take any questions from the council, now that a little time has passed and we've had some chance, you know, some chances, opportunities to hear from, you know, both sides of, both viewpoints of the city lake and see what really we're up against right now, if we need to make additional decisions, if we need to carry on as is. But I wanted everybody to have the opportunity to ask some questions.
I think everyone agrees that we want to make the swimming as safe as possible for everyone, and the committee has been working on doing some of the things. We thank the committee and Bob for what you're doing and the time you spend out there.
After I got an email from Susan, I pulled together some computer research as far as areas where swimming or drowning or swimming catastrophe, paraplegic type ascendance and so forth have taken place and made it into the appellate court reports. That's the only way we really have of knowing where there are nasty liability fixations. We don't have the same resources that insurance companies have as far as comparing settlements and things like that, except we do have a public entity risk service that is part of our ICAP, Community Assurance Pool that we belong to. So I did talk to Brenda Snyder, who's a liaison for the city of Fairfield, a little bit about this, too. I gave you an outline about things that I think you've been considering for the last month, and it also falls in line with things that are in the cases. I'll tell you, I brought along about a half a dozen cases, but I'm not going to bore you by telling you case histories of tragedies. I will tell you probably the lead case for our part of the country is one out of Devil's Lake over in Illinois, and it's very much like our Waterworks Park or Bonnefield Park. It's a park situation. It has a part of it that is a beach, no lifeguards, but a cordoned off roped area with signage that says, "Please swim at the beach. Swim at your own risk." And what happens is a young man goes down and doesn't swim at the beach, goes to an area that's remote from the beach, drives off-road in an area he's not supposed to, tells some buddies where he's going to be, and they're going to come meet him, and then he runs down a little bit of a rocky slope that goes into the lake, and he dives in. Three feet below the water is a submerged rock mass. He breaks his neck as a paraplegic for a while and dies. Goes to federal court. He was visiting family in Illinois, so it ends up in federal court instead of their state court, but there's a $4 million-plus dollar judgment entered. And Tom says, "Well, my..." And the town says, "Well, now, wait a minute. I mean, this guy, he ignored our signs. He went to a part of the park that was clearly not designated for swimming. He understood, or he should have understood, he was a college-age kid from Southern Illinois University, he should have understood the risks. How are we as a municipality liable?" And unfortunately, courts always have answers, so they explained that it's a situation where they were only going to impose partial liability because their state, like our state, has something called comparative fault. Compared to fault means that probably everybody in an accident has some degree of fault, but they put more fault on the municipality than they did on the young man. And some of their reasoning was the adequacy of the signage, how thoroughly did you enforce the prohibition if you intended your limitation of the swimming just to the beach area? How adequately did you enforce the prohibition against the other areas? Were you monitoring it? Were you patrolling it? Did you have signs out there? If you had signs out there, did you have signage that really told anybody anything? It's one thing to have a danger sign over there across the lake. It's another thing to have a danger sign over there that says, "Danger submerged rocks, danger submerged water plant equipment, danger submerged intakes," and that sort of thing. So, they were hard on the municipality for not having more adequate signage, basically more signage, and other things to avoid the possibility of this kind of accident occurring. They classified the whole lake as an attractive nuisance, and they referred to it as sort of a wink that the municipality did as far as looking at it for purpose of enforcement. And if you are going to let everybody have an implied permission to use the area, then you're going to be at risk. So, the thing was on appeal. The appeal was upheld, or the ruling was upheld. The substantial part of that verdict was assessed against the municipality, and there's a lot of lessons in there about what you can do better. What I've given you as far as the outline doesn't tell you what you should do. It tells you what you should do if you decide on this course, this course, this course, or this course. And then some other thoughts. If you go with an absolute prohibition, if you follow me on this, it definitely minimizes your liability, but you still are going to be looking at that question about enforcement. Are you going to be monitoring it still? Are you going to be patrolling it? Are you going to have gates, fences, barricades, big signage about your prohibitions? And you're still going to have the potential for an attractive nuisance. Somebody that is limited in their capability to understand the risk, that isn't necessarily a child, most frequently it's a child, could still have an accident at your prohibited area. So, all of those things are still there for you to consider even if you say no, even if you're not going to do that, you're still going to need to do some things. One of the commentaries in the Devil's Lake case was they found in the minutes of the municipality a few years earlier that there'd been a proposal by a safety engineering firm to spend about $40,000 wrapping the lake with different kinds of signage, some lights in certain areas where there was definitely something that was a hazard. And it was turned down by the municipality's governing body. It was in the minutes that they didn't want to spend that much money. They thought it was unnecessary and so forth. You're not having that kind of proposal, but more in different signage is something that probably goes along with each package that's on the outline here. If you have a restricted use to the posted area, which I think we're hearing more requests, "Let us use the beach, let us use the beach as it's intended to be used," or "Let us use the beach with the swimming lanes outside of it." I've had several people tell me, "That's just fine. That's what they'd like to do." I've been around way too long on some of this stuff. I remember when we had a packed room, we had people in the back that were telling us, they didn't care what we said, they were strong swimmers, and they could swim anywhere on the lake. And I see some of you nodding, yeah, I remember when that was said. And the thing is that there are people that really believe that, and regardless of the fact that they're strong swimmers, they're still just as susceptible to accident. And so, if there's something underneath, if there's something in the water, if there's an unknown spring, an unknown current, an unknown cold spot, all of those things that sometimes cause people to be startled are things that we can't predict for them. They're still going to be at risk even if they're strong enough that they feel they could go anywhere and everywhere without paying any attention to our rules or regulations. We always have to err on the side of more notice, more awareness, more concern that somebody that is less capable of understanding needs to be made wary. And so, if you're looking at restricted use to posted areas, while it lessens your liability, you still have to do monitoring and patrolling. Clearly defined areas of use, you've done most of that, but there's more that you can have on your signage. One of the other cases that was a nasty verdict had to do with a marked pool, and it just wasn't marked enough as far as explaining where depth changes, explaining that there was a point where the depth was a hazard. And at that situation, I think we could manage that out at the boys that we have at the beach by simply indicating where it's five feet, where it's 10 feet. By the time you get out to the ropes, even though I understand the ropes have been brought in some, you're still in over your head, I believe. So, those kinds of things you need to have as clearly indicated to the users as possible. Big billboard-sized signs is almost what they're saying in the court cases about making people aware. And I think our town's done a good job as far as an explanatory sign out there that says, you know, "Parents, police your children, swim at your own risk, do this, this, and this, follow our park rules." We do have a way of enforcing those park rules if we see violations.
We have no city ordinances.
We don't have specific ordinance that say you can't do that, but we do have a city ordinance that says you can't violate park rules. Somebody tips over the picnic tables up at Chautauqua Park, they're violating a park rule. We can still cite them for that. But we haven't done a beach-type ordinance. We're relatively new to the whole concept in the last few years, and, you know, people had asked, "How come we don't have some of this stuff in place?" And I think for the last 40 years, I've been referring affectionately to Fairfield as "ruralist city." Why wouldn't we have a water patrol? Why wouldn't we have a lot of those things in our ordinance, but towns without, you know, running water through it have? Anyway, at this point, if police and fire think we should add something to our ordinance, I guess that's something else to take public safety because other than that, we just have a generic park rules ordinance that we could, you know, treat it like a violation of our picnic tables. That's what we've got to go with so far. If you do the restricted use in the posted area decision, you have to decide if you're going to have some things there. And I've had a couple talk with Derek and some of the people at Park and Rec, Park and Rec Foundation boards. There'd be a way to finance some of this, but if you're going to not have lifeguards, and there is some mention about lifeguarding on here, but down on the other considerations, lifeguarding is, it's an expensive proposition if you do it, even if you have lifeguards that can't see in the turgid water, can't, you know, really do much more than be there. You still, if you're going to be there dawn to dusk, and a lot of the parks will be open dawn to dusk, wage and hours going to require that you have a couple that do what they're trained to do. You're going to have to have somebody backup so they have the brakes and that sort of thing. You're probably going to have two shifts, and Derek, in my conversation led me to believe you probably have at least six or seven people employed and sort of have a lifeguard department to meet wage and hour requirements. So, that's a decision if you decide on a manpower solution. You have to take into consideration, plus they are all going to be needing the training in lake saving, lake life-saving versus clear municipal pool experience that we've had with our lifeguard staff at Park and Rec.
John, if you have lifeguards, does that make the liability greater if you do put lifeguards there?
It creates, I think it's one of the things I've mentioned in the discussion on lifeguards, that it does create an illusion of...
Oh, yeah.
...security.
Security.
And it's common on some of the cases, actually a lifeguard, if they're trying to do their best for what they're trained for, that's the most, you know, expected under the standards of liability. But you have standards of care there that are, you look at as far as what their training requirements are. There've been some good postings on the internet about lifeguard standards from the American Association as far as what you have in an outdoor pool with clear water, what you have in any lake situation. Then it gets even worse if you have a lake with any kind of water motion or large lakes or ocean lifeguards and things like that. You have all kinds of rules for the differences in what they do and what they have to do with. We don't have to worry about some of that here. Again, if you stick with the beach, you have rule signs, you have prohibitory signs, caution signs, subsurface hazards, and as clear a notices as you can use, and you enforce what you've got there, it's still a potential attractive nuisance. It's always a potential attractive nuisance. And as far as the enforcement side of things, the chief's here.